I'd like to call the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from June 11th, 2020, for the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on. That passes. Report of recommendation: Approval of a wall sign variation for case number 2020-CDC-04 to allow for a wall sign on an elevation without street frontage to be located at 650 North Wooddale Road, forward space. Ed, I believe you're going to be talking on this?
Yes, thank you Chairman. Didn't think I would ever say this, but it is a pleasure to be back in person. I have missed the meetings. Moving right along. 650 North Wooddale Road. This is a forward space, CDC 202004. Obviously, this is the location just north of us on Wooddale Road. If my clicker works right. Obviously, this is the brand-new building. The applicant already has a sign on the facade along Wooddale Road. What we're talking about is a second wall sign at this location. This location does not have a street frontage, hence the need for a variance. This is the sign that we're talking about. There's one existing. Important to note, just jump back a second, that it is in compliant in terms of size. It just doesn't have a secondary street frontage. There is another smaller sign on the rear of the building. And this went to the CDC. They recommended approval four to zero. And it does meet the standards for the CDC found that it does meet the standards for sign variation approval per section 13-802. Thank you.
Are the applicants here today?
Yes, we have a representative.
Oh, okay. Just want to invite, you know, thank you for coming to town. Questions? Alderman. Yep. Been a long time.
Yeah. Thanks. I'll make a motion to approve the variation for sign as presented.
Okay, any questions? Okay, let's just take a roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next, recommendation: 372 Parkview Station, special use for multiple family dwelling units, planned unit development, preliminary and final major site plan review, case number CDC-2020-05, 372 North Wooddale Road. Ed, are you going to be talking on this?
Are you still happy?
Okay, thank you. This is case CDC 202005, 372 North Wooddale Road, also known as 372 Parkview Station, special use, PUD, preliminary and final, major site plan review. And I know the applicant has a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm going to be fairly brief, just to recap, because I know that the applicant is going to go into the details of what's changed from the concept plan to now, and some other details that I know the committee will be interested in. So, moving right along, just to refresh your memory, 372 is right next door to us. This went to, this item went to, it actually had concept plan approval on March 10th of this year. 4.3 acres, obviously the size. Sure everybody knows about it. It's the former SBT Bank location with a pretty sizable surface parking area and a wooded area. Moving right along, it's Zone TCB, Town Center Business Zoning District. Moving right along, this is the future comprehensive land use plan that we adopted in 2018. Obviously, this is the site right here. Retail commercial is its designation. And moving right along, this is the site plan. I don't want to steal the applicant's thunder, but just as a recap, and I know that they will go over the changes. Obviously, four buildings, 1, 2, 3, 4, 142 units. Obviously, parking that's associated with that. The green areas are the permeable pavers. Blue are the dumpster enclosures. And then, moving right along. So, the, this item went to the June 15th CDC meeting. There are a number of deviations that are requested. I would say that with our PUD developments recently, a number of these deviations are consistent. And I would probably focus on one that I know that we've talked about with other properties, driveway width at roadway. That's one that consistently comes up with most of our PUD developments. So, I would focus probably on the last two elements, which are specific to residential development, dwelling units and parking spaces. I'm sure the applicant will get into parking in more detail. And then, the other two that are really strictly for this request and application to be considered by City Council, engineering stormwater detention, which I know we'll get to, and the building code, which requires 85% brickstone elevations. So, I know a number of these things come up with other developments. If they come up on a fairly regular basis, from a zoning standpoint, what that tells me is that the code needs updating. I know the council is aware that we are currently in the process of working with a consultant to update our code. So, some of these things will be factored into that update. But I think really what I'm getting at is the focus kind of from a staff standpoint. Obviously, these are all PUD deviations and merit consideration. But some of these, and I know front build-to-line, that's been a consistent one with other developments. So, just want to point that out. Moving right along, it did go to the CDC on June 15th. I'm a little behind on my presentation because I'm, I apologize. I am fidgeting with my face covering here.
Just a little rusty.
I'm hoping I'll get used to it. We'll, we'll see. So, moving right along, the CDC. The recommendation failed. It was a two-to-two vote for a special use permit, PUD, which is a preliminary final and a major site plan review. These were the conditions that was recommended in the staff report. And then, staff did find that it was consistent with the UDO and consistent with the comprehensive plan. And with that, I will cease talking. I know that, you know, Chairman, I know the applicant has a presentation. Certainly with some more details on that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Could proceed with the presentation?
Good evening. Air police, Alderman, Mr. Bond. My name is Aristotle Holikios. I'm president of Intercontinental Real Estate Development, and I'm here representing our project of 372 Parkview Station. It's nice to see all of you today in person. I want to thank you for the opportunity to allow us to present this project. I can tell you that since the beginning of the process, we have been dealing with a number of challenges to get to this point. And that doesn't even include the COVID pandemic impact that we're dealing with. But having said that, I could also tell you that our excitement and enthusiasm for this project hasn't waned one bit. We're looking forward to it, and we can't wait to get started. Tonight, we will be presenting a detailed overview of the development, including modifications that have been made to the original plan and the final concept. And while the modifications may seem somewhat subtle, they represent significant improvements and benefit to the overall project. The renderings, drawings, engineering and reports were prepared by experts in their field. Most of these firms and individuals have completed work right here in the city of Wooddale and for other government entities, including the Park District and the Library District. I'm sure you're familiar with KLOA, our traffic engineers, and WT Group, our civil engineers and architects. Paul DeCreyf is the head of our multifamily division, and he'll be leading the presentation tonight. And we'll introduce the other participants of our team, and they will be talking about their individual aspects of their contribution to the project and working with the city staff to make this project a reality. I will make myself available at the end of the presentation for any questions you may have. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you again. Good evening. Chris Stark and I with WT Group would like to acknowledge and thank staff and our new neighbors for their very active involvement in the planning stages of 372 Parkview Station, as well as communicating to you their excitement for this project. Chris and I will be, Chris will be introducing members of the engineering team in a moment. But before I begin, please know, we too are obviously excited and cannot wait to begin construction. As I stand here today before you, in the midst of a global pandemic, we currently do not see a need to request a modification of the timeline in the development agreement. I've already reached out to Mr. Bond to discuss ways in which we can expedite a development process using access agreements to specifically begin demolition in the fall. We have two main components of our presentation. First, the first covers a review of the project showing those elements that have essentially remained the same since our initial plan was submitted and included in the development agreement. The second half covers the modifications we have made in concert with staff, elected officials and our neighbors. And as Aristotle just mentioned, while those modifications to our original plan seem subtle, they represent significant improvements. We are excited to have already gained the support of all our neighbors. And should we be fortunate to gain zoning, we plan on being your neighbor for a very long time. ICD has no current plans to sell this or any of its other assets for a very long time. As we begin our presentation, you can see, given the design of the units, orientation of the building, or you will see the design and orientation of the buildings and amenity package, we believe we will be adding much-needed, meaningful density to support local business and park programs. As you will recall, we have created a community to attract millennials and active seniors that encourages residents to get out and experience all that the local area has to offer, helping expand local GDP. Please note that this analysis does not include the city portion of the real estate taxes, nor the multiple effect of the sales tax from net new annual business activity, which can be over two times. Our unit mix is comprised mostly of studio and smaller one-bedroom units and targets millennial and active senior residents looking for a walkable, transit-oriented development, or TOD lifestyle, detaching themselves from the burdens of a car and payments of car insurance and affording them more disposable income and time. This is a trend throughout Chicago. And while rents are a bit in flux at the current moment due to the pandemic, we still estimate rents at the time we begin leasing to range between 800 for the smallest units to 1,675 for the largest. Keeping with the TOD theme and walkable goals, we have designed the interiors of the units to have luxury features as shown. Fit and finish will include solid surface countertops, too. Our four-story building entrance will have a welcome area and flex space that is currently designed to create a coffee bar atmosphere. All access will be electronically controlled with cameras throughout. These are all elevator buildings. Each lobby will have a high-tech package receiving area. Our area amenities encourage residents to get out, visit and patronize local attractions and businesses like Wooddale Park District's, the Beach Water Park and Fitness Studio. We have worked diligently with our neighbors to create property management principles we can implement to assure parking doesn't become an issue for anyone. Of note, we have discussed the possibility of offering some overflow parking to major swim events to the Park District. This is a great segue to talk about parking. I'd like to invite up Javier Milan with KLOA to discuss parking as well as traffic.
Good evening. My name is Javier Milan. I'm a principal of KLOA Incorporated, and we were retained to conduct the traffic study and parking study for the proposed development. So, as Paul mentioned, as part of the traffic impact study, we did a parking evaluation. So, the site, given its proximity to the train station and the mix of land uses in the area, it's a TOD or transit-oriented development. Parking demand and requirements at a TOD are much lower than at a parking demands of developments that are far away from public transportation. So, based on census data for Wooddale, auto ownership of rental units within a quarter mile and half a mile of the train station, it's 1.44 vehicles per unit. We also looked at the IT, which stands for the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual. It's a survey or compilation of numerous surveys of different apartments throughout the United States. And the peak parking demand projected for this development will be 157 vehicles on a weekday and 186 vehicles on a Saturday. The proposed number of parking spaces can accommodate that demand. Lastly, and I'm so sorry, I should have put this in here, and I do apologize. Lastly, we compiled a list of 18 mature and fully-developed TOD developments throughout the suburbs of Chicago and found that the average parking ratio provided is 1.26 spaces per unit. For all of the reasons that I mentioned, you know, the number of parking spaces provided will be adequate in accommodating the projected parking demand. Towards the, or moving towards the traffic analysis portion of what we did, you know, as part of our traffic study, we conducted traffic counts and observations in the area, of the traffic patterns in the area. And once we have this information, then we can actually analyze the intersections to determine how they are operating. Based on the analysis, all of the study intersections that you've seen here are operating at acceptable levels of service. And the level of service is just a designation that is given to determine whether the intersection is failing or not. Once we have that baseline, we then proceed to estimate the number of trips that the proposed development will generate and assign them to the area roadways based on the existing travel patterns. And those are derived from the traffic counts. And as you can see, and let me use this in here. As you can see in the trip generation table, the proposed development will actually generate a minimum amount of traffic during the peak hours. And peak hours is just when you, me and everybody else is going to work and then coming back. Just by concentrating alone on the total number of vehicles, and that's in and out, and the same thing in and out, you can see that it's about one additional trip per minute, if you want to just average that number. So, after that, we have to analyze future conditions. Well, we cannot analyze in a vacuum. We have to take into account and consideration there's going to be growth in the area. So, we get growth factors from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning and increase the existing traffic volumes by that factor. Then, we add our side traffic. So, we can analyze intersections and see how well they will be operating. Based on the results of the capacity analysis, the development will have a very minimal impact on traffic conditions, and there is ample capacity to accommodate the future traffic volumes. I believe there's been some concerns with traffic that potentially could travel west on Commercial Avenue, going north on Grove, and then making a left to go east on Foster to the signal. To that, I offer the following. And when we started working on this, we actually drove the neighborhood, and we did it several times. And the route to go to a signal at Foster is actually a much longer distance, requires numerous turns, and it takes on average 145 to 150 seconds to get to the signal. When you compare that to the amount of time or delay that a vehicle would actually experience making a left turn at Commercial Avenue onto Wooddale Road, it's actually much less and quicker and easier to make the left and to travel through the neighborhood. However, if it becomes a problem, I believe restricting the movement to left out from that access drive could be done via signage. And this is something that has been done at other places. But professionally speaking, I don't believe it's going to be a problem for what I stated. With that, that concludes my presentation, and I will turn it over to architecture. Chris?
Okay. Okay, pardon me as I change my costume. And we, of course, are here all because we all want a successful transit-oriented development. And we know we're asking for some deviations or variations if this wasn't a PUD. We feel, though, by the granting of those deviations, we're actually offering Wooddale a better product. As Javier just shared, we've looked at 18 successful apartment developments that have an average parking ratio of 1.26, as Javier mentioned. We're actually proposing 1.54. So, what I'm trying to hopefully show, and as Jim comes up and shows about the detention, we are dramatically reducing the runoff rate. We are exponentially increasing the amount of detention volume. So, what we're trying to show is that even though we're asking for variances, we're not trying to do the bare minimum. As Javier showed, we're at 1.54 versus the industry standard of 1.26. And Jim will show the positive things that we're doing with detention and the drainage rate. And then, I'm hopefully showing you the same thing here with the building itself. Here, we're looking at a three-story building, which is the, we call it the front traditionally, but really is the courtyard elevation. All four of our elevations of all four buildings are front elevations. They all have the same aesthetic characteristics. There's not a flat elevation anywhere. We're trying to change vertical planes in and out. And then, in addition to that, as we change the vertical nature, we have vertical at the end, center, end again. Then, we create a vertical volume in there. Then, we're further breaking those up with the horizontal elements that you see throughout the building. In addition to that, we're adding full and French balconies. And at the bottom, we're adding the face brick. So, the brick adds visually the base of the building. And brick works great in compression, so it should be at the bottom of the building. Above, we're using a product invented by Mr. Stottmeiser in 1955. And now, the name is called Stow because they just took the first three letters of the company name. And he is the one that actually invented what's called the Exterior Insulating Finish System, or what you hear as EFS at times. Stow is the only product that I spec out on any of my projects. You might have heard of Drive It, you might have heard of other brands. Stow is the best product. It was invented by Mr. Stottmeiser, and it is imperative in that it was developed for northern climates with an elastomeric base resin that can expand and contract with the weather itself. In addition, the EFS-type product allows us to have highly energy-efficient buildings. So, we're all green-conscious. We're all in terms of wanting to create better buildings that use lower energy. That product helps us do it. In addition to that, we're using what's called Stow Lotus. And that is a product that actually, when it rains on it, it's a self-cleaning product. Actually, the dirt will not streak on there. It's like a very super-nice high wax on a car where the dirt does not stick on the metal finish. It will roll off the EFS finish. So, what we're trying to do is we're augmenting those elements, and we're breaking it down, getting it down to human scale. We are trying to create that urban transit experience. With the next slide, this is the so-called back. Again, we have the rhythm. We do it a little bit differently on this side. We have these modern-style bay windows that are coming out with a new material that we're showing, new to the, what we've just talked about. We have the brick, we have the EFS. And then, here, we have what's called ACM, which is an aluminum composite material. We use that, it's a metal, plastic, and then metal, because we do not want oil canning. I'm sure you've seen like metal faces and stuff like that, that you kind of see a wave. They use too thin of a gauge. They didn't mount it right. The aluminum composite material is a self-supporting material, gives you a flat, beautiful finish. And then, that's augmented again with the full and then the French balconies. Again, the emphasis of the vertical broken down with the horizontal. When we get to the four-story building, this is so-called the front again, but it's the courtyard. Our courtyard is surrounded by the buildings. We all face in. The concept is they come onto the site if they're driving, and they enter through the main entrances. This is where Paul was showing the very nice interior office lobby and then also the package receiving room. Again, we want to create that element of the plane of definitions, the rhythm of the windows, making a very four-dimensional experience through the site, not just three-dimensional. The fourth dimension, of course, is time. And so, as you experience and you walk around the building, we hope that you get surprised when you see that this side is a little different with these bay windows and such. And this is the side that's facing the roadway. And it's anything but a back elevation, even though we call it the rear elevation. It is a street-front elevation. We do have a couple service entries, but those are going to be a storefront door with smoked glass, and so it looks just like any other entry door. We are thinking of We are thinking that folks that are living in this building will be coming up from the train, up the sidewalk, and going right into that door. So this will be their transit entry point. And this is kind of the entry point, the entryway to the facility. You can tell by the placement of the buildings. We're asking to be a little closer to the roadway, and we're doing that on purpose to create that urban pedestrian feel to the building itself. We want to create the rhythms, proportions, the textures, the colors of the building itself. You can see the brick here. Little dark, I apologize, but there's actually, as you get closer to the building, we recess every seven courses of brick, just to break it down again for further to a pedestrian level, to a pedestrian scale. Very sensitive of how someone moves through this whole development. Our height, the four-story building, is just under 48 feet. It's 47 feet and 11 and 1/2 inches. And our three-story building is just under 36 feet, again, that half inch off. We could, of course, by code, do 72 feet. Could you imagine two buildings at 72 feet, just way out of proportion, not only to this development and to one another, but to the whole area itself? We feel this is a very strong statement. It's going to make a very contemporary, modern, clean statement for passerbyers on the road, but also, quite frankly, on the train as they see that. And we feel that'll really create what the market is looking for, which is a contemporary, urban, pedestrian-feeling development. And the elements that we're showing is the cornice lines, the EFS, as we talked about, the energy efficiency. People are very focused on that. The brick lines and stepping down, the massing of the building, the elements themselves, the French balconies, et cetera, all add to that flavor to create that transient development. We are very purposely trying to do four buildings so that we create a nice harmony in terms of a kind of a courtyard feel, distributing the residents over the properties. But we want to say one thing. The code allows us to be 40% in terms of building coverage. We are only 25%. We are only using 63% of what we're allowed. We're leaving 37% on the table. And we're doing that because we know the type of people that we want to attract to this facility do not want to be super-jammed in, have a little opening, have some great views, but also get a very good, good product and allow them to meet their needs for their lifestyle. And so again, we just want to add that we're trying to do that throughout. This is the pervious pavers. We have tons and tons of pervious pavers on the project. So again, another surprise as you walk through the development itself. And this is just a tree line, again, very purposeful, very intentional to create this urban feel as you're walking down the path. This is our landscape plan, but again, I want to just emphasize that if you take the ground coverage of the four buildings, and here we're creating that courtyard, the main entry where you saw our main perspective, again, we are only 25% of the allowable 40%. And also, our ground coverage, you know, is the maximum is 80%. We're less than 80%. So again, we're asking for some variances, but we're not trying to get the bare minimum. We're giving more. As I said, we're leaving 37% on the table. So with that, in terms of the landscaping, we're actually adding 100 trees to the site. They are a mixture of deciduous and coniferous, and we feel we're offering a better product by offering more coniferous trees than the allowable by code of 100 trees. We're only allowed 20 coniferous trees. We are, though, wanting to do 40 trees, and that is part of the discussions, as Paul mentioned, that we've had with the Park District and with White Cottage, also some with the Police Department as well. So we're putting in evergreens along the Police Department area here. We're putting in evergreens throughout the development. And again, what, as you can see, we're adding 100 trees. Of those 100 trees, 55 are replacement trees. So we're not doing zero replacement trees. To be very candid, you have a very unique ordinance that says that you have to replace garbage trees. We have from our next, you know, the next survey showed that the trees themselves, we have 197, 94 trees, 163 are prohibited. Your code doesn't allow those trees to be there. In fact, 10 of them are so bad that the city requires those trees to be removed. And why? Because they're evasive, and they're, quite frankly, they choke out the good trees. So what we're proposing is, yes, we're asking for a variance. Your code says that we have to replace every single tree that we're removing, but if we don't build any buildings on this site, I don't know if we can still get all the number of trees that that would require and allow them to live beyond seven years, where they would get so big they would crowd themselves out. So we are adding, like I say, 55 replacement trees and a total of 100 trees. We're adding 16 different types of shrubs, bushes, grasses. We're going to have color throughout the year. That's why we're asking for more coniferous-style trees and allowing the grasses, they move in the winter, get movement and interest, not just... So if we went strictly by the code, we would have 20 evergreen trees, and we would have 80 trees that lose their leaves in the fall and are just sticks during the whole winter. We don't want that. We want a mixture. We add the evergreens into the coniferous trees throughout the whole development, you know, so we have a mixture of that, so we have that constant color throughout the year. And then finally, again, it's, you have 163 prohibited trees, 10 of them the city is demanding to get rid of right away, so that's 173 trees of the 194 that are there that are no good. And so there's 17 trees that we are taking down because of roadways or where the building is, and we are replacing those. Those are requiring those 55 replacement trees. Basically, so we are meeting that requirement. The only thing we're not meeting is replacing the garbage trees. So in summary, again, we're only 25% of the 40 allowable. We're providing 100 trees. We're providing a very good development. We're providing full face brick, not thin brick, full face brick. So what we're asking on the variance on the brick side is not for expense reasons, but in terms of allowing us to do a more contemporary, modern, energy-efficient building with the use of the Stow, the ACM, and then the brick as a base. And again, it's full with brick. If we were going the cheap route, it would be thin brick. So with that, I thank you for your time, and we are moving on to Chris Stark now.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Stark. I'm the project manager for this project. You just heard from Chris Kalaszewski, our architect on staff. Javier Millen, who was the traffic engineer, and coming up after me will be Jim Glasscott, who will take you through the civil, the civil engineering aspect of this project. Just wanted to run a couple of things by you guys in terms of the changes. And it was mentioned before that we made some very subtle changes that will make, that made actually a larger impact in the better, in towards this project and to make it a lot more functional. One of the things that we're going to go through is the signage, the Wooddale pedestrian building access, I'll show you that, the trash enclosure relocation, the additional parking spaces, and of course, and the stormwater. And we'll close with the stormwater with Jim. This is the first site plan that you had seen. There is, everybody has seen this over and over again, and the changes do look very minimal. The pointer, there we go. One of the aspects here was the sign. It was originally designed at 6'8". We had, we had two entries out the back of this building, and I'll show you that in detail coming up. Over here is the trash enclosure, and I think for the most part, that is about it, but we're going to look at that in detail. Here's the current site plan as it sits. The sign right now has an overhaul height of 6 feet. One of the other changes here was the back of the building here, and the trash enclosure is now moved, and I'll blow that up for you as well. So the, in detail, the first layout that we had had the two entrances or the two exits out the back of the building along the frontage of Wooddale. So over here is the pictorial exhibit here to show that. And what we had done here to alleviate some slope issues in terms of stairs and even a ramp, we condensed that sidewalk by ribboning the sidewalk along the back of the building coming to this end, and then we can walk out safely to the public sidewalk. And there it is here in plain view. The next one that we had, we had removed, we had a trash enclosure in this location, and it was right next to the maintenance garage here. And by doing so, we had removed that trash enclosure, allowing for two or three more spaces, and we had moved that trash enclosure to the center courtyard for ease of the residents from both sides of that, both sides of the courtyard between the four-story building and the three-story building. So here's the overall layout from a bird's-eye view, of course. This here is the three-story, that's the four-story with a nice view of the courtyard. So folks coming in from Wooddale Avenue will have a nice view coming through here to get to their destination through here, and of course, this is the parking lot area here. A large part of this parking lot area will be used for detention. Along with that detention area, which Jim will get into, there was one of the comments that we had here that Wooddale had required that trees be placed in the islands at the end of each parking row. So we had reconfigured our detention area to accommodate two of the areas that were of concern. So we're hoping that that meets with your expectation. So at this time, I would like to bring up Jim Glasscott to discuss the stormwater.
Hello. I am Jim Glasscott. I'm a civil engineer with our civil engineering group at WT. On behalf of our team, I'd like to start by taking a moment to thank the staff as well as Alderman Woods and Alderman Wesley for their feedback regarding the stormwater management system during the design process. So to start, we've designed our system to exceed the requirements of the DePage County countywide stormwater and floodplain management ordinance. Additionally, the staff has communicated that the city's consultant engineer, Christopher Burke Engineering, concurs with our current design. This has been achieved through the use of permeable pavers throughout the site to limit the amount of new impervious area that we're creating, and by installing three separate underground detention systems on the site to limit, to restrict and store runoff from the site. The system has been designed to account and reduce, account for and reduce flow rates for storms up to 8.57 inches based on the latest rainfall data in the state of Illinois, which was released last year, which is a 100-year storm or a 1% chance recurrence in any given year. And for reference, a storm that happened in the city of Wooddale on May 17, 2020, generated between 2 1/2 and 2.7 inches. So we're designing for a rainfall amount a little more than three times that reference storm from a couple months back here. The design of our proposed detention system, our proposed detention systems will reduce the stormwater runoff in all directions from our site by up to 83% compared to the existing conditions with no development happening on the site. So to start with, this is a map showing the current drainage patterns on the site. Site drains in three directions with Area 5 draining out to the east, Areas 2 and 6 draining out to the west, and Areas 1, what do we have, 1, 3, 4, 7, 8, and 7 draining out to the southwest. In the proposed condition, we're keeping that same general scheme, obviously not redirecting water. And in the proposed condition, Area 4 will be draining out to the east. Areas 2 and 5, 2 and 5, will continue to drain out to the west, and Areas 1, 3, 7, and 6 will drain out to the southwest. One thing we want to note here, and this was a concern raised by the Park District, that in the northwest corner in the existing condition, this whole area just sheet drains into their site, creating some drainage issues. What we're going to be doing in our proposed condition is cutting off a lot of that water, picking up the runoff from this Area 5, which is the upstream area next to the police station here, and picking up, obviously, our site area in storm sewers and rotting it through our detention system and our permeable pavers, and then having that discharge into an existing storm sewer system. So that should greatly improve their drainage, their drainage issues in the proposed condition as well. So this slide shows our current detention improvements. Up in the northwest corner, you can see we've got two 60-inch pipe systems that are going to provide .087 acre-feet of storage, which is about 3,800 cubic feet of storage, and we're going to have some permeable pavers in that area as well. The south area, we're going to be providing two systems. So the main system here will be an underground vault that'll provide the bulk of our detention volume, and that system will provide about .84 acre-feet or 3,6,600 cubic feet. And in addition, we're also going to be providing a 36-inch underground detention system here that's just going to be a pipe system that will provide an additional .031 acre-feet or about 1,350 cubic feet. Permeable pavers are going to be provided in the courtyard area and in the parking areas to the south and to the west to help us limit the increase in impervious area to 19,661 square feet, which is below the DePage County countywide stormwater and floodplain ordinance threshold of 25,000 square feet where full detention for the site would be triggered. Additionally, the pavers will provide post-construction BMP storage, BMP being best management practices, which is essentially, the idea is basically you're providing storage in stone beneath the pavers to try and promote water infiltrating into the ground, trying to kind of replicate the natural condition, so less water is coming out of the site and more is going straight into the ground. And we will be providing .308 acre-feet of storage in the in the stone beneath those permeable pavers, which is about 13,400 cubic feet. And that represents 1.25 inches of storage over the new impervious areas of the site. The permeable pavers will also require a maintenance agreement with the city. Maintenance will be ongoing as needed. We don't anticipate a major maintenance hassle with these pavers. You know, if one pops out, it'll have to be adjusted. If one gets cracked up, it'll have to be replaced, that sort of a thing. But long-term, in general, they shouldn't require a significant amount of maintenance. These pavers are also designed for heavy traffic loading while maintaining an aesthetically pleasing design. Chris kind of showed what they were going to look like in his renderings of the site. These pavers, depending on the style, have been used in anything from intermodal transfer facilities and dock facilities to your typical residential backyard patio construction. They also have, as a kind of a description of the strength of the blocks themselves, they have two and a half times the strength of a standard iDOT pavement, pavement section. And we're also working with the manufacturer of the pavers to make sure that we're really limiting how much water any of these paver blocks themselves can absorb as a method to really make sure that they're going to stand up to salt use in the winter. And the company we're using is providing us with an industry-low absorption rate of 4%. It's a little bit of excessive information, but essentially their blocks will suck in less water than any other blocks that are available on the market. So in total, our detention storage, we're going to be providing 1.27 acre-feet, a little over 55,300 cubic feet, which is roughly the size of a six-lane Olympic swimming pool, for reference, kind of spread out throughout the site rather than having one single basin with everything kind of routed there. We're providing more of a green system by spreading it out and letting the storage be provided where the water's falling essentially. So this slide kind of shows the layout of our overall storm sewer as well as our water main and sanitary systems. Kind of a lot of detail jammed on this plan. But what we really want to discuss here is just the locations of our restrictor structures. So this structure number 87 at the northwest corner, this structure number 20 in the middle of the site, and this structure number 9 are where we're going to have our restrictor structures that are going to provide a small orifice to restrict the water moving through the site to allow us to utilize the detention basin, the detention volume that we're providing. So then what we have here is some details kind of showing what those structures are going to look like. So this is going to be structure number 9. This is on that 36-inch pipe system kind of in the south driveway area. That's going to have a single six-inch restrictor. So what this is, this is a six-foot diameter manhole structure, essentially with a metal plate bolted into the middle of it. And then that metal plate has a little hole cut in the middle of that that kind of serves as your restriction for your detention system. This plan shows the other two details. This, I think the top one is 20. This is for the other south system. So this is restricting that underground vault system. We're providing a 5.8-inch orifice in this one. And this one's a little bit different in that the plate doesn't go to the top of the structure here. This is designed to allow any excessive flows to go through here and overtop through the system into our downstream storm sewers without causing any issues overflowing to the neighboring property. So it really helps to contain storms far in excess of what we've designed for. And then this is structure number 87. This is the one going out to the west system. This is sort of the most complex of the three. This actually has two orifices. We have a 3.3-inch restrictor kind of down at the bottom here, and a 10.8-inch restrictor. And then again, we have that overflow, that overflow slot going over the top of this structure. And the reason we end up with multiple holes in the wall on this one is just so that we can really kind of match, most effectively match the curve of the discharges from the site from the various storms in the existing, the proposed condition. We're providing a pretty drastic reduction, but we want to make sure that we're using all of the volume we have while not excessively over-restricting and requiring more volume than we would need for the larger storms. So that brings me back to my first slide here. This slide, again, kind of shows what the peak flows in the existing condition in each direction are going to be versus the peak flows in each direction in the proposed condition. Showing, and then we show the reduction. We're a little under 83% peak flow reduction to the southwest, little, little under 21% to the west, and just under 84% going to the east. And then showing how much volume we're providing in each area. The east area, for reference, we're reducing the amount of water that's sheet draining straight out to Wooddale. And by doing that, we're, we don't need to provide detention to really, to reduce the amount of flow we have going in that direction. With that, hand it back to Paul.
Thank you again. We're, again, very excited to start, even with all things considered today. So we thank you, and we're all here for questions.
Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation. I do have, I'm a little confused on the trees, on that deviation. We are a tree city, and we're talking about replacing, it's always, you're telling me we have 163 trees there, and I see, you know, the phi and luw and all that stuff. Some of those trees are dead, but you are putting in 100 trees. So was there 263 trees there before? Or I don't understand. I'm just trying to get the feel of this deviation.
Now, what the trees actually are, is it's 193 trees are there right now. 163 are not allowed per code. Additional 10 are stated to be removed right away. So net effect, we're keeping four, and we're replacing 17 good trees that are there. There are 17 good trees that we are taking down. The rest of the trees are dead or scrub trees or evasive trees.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, so I'm just curious. So when you're saying these are trees that are not allowed, are we talking about, what do they call those trees? Buckthorns? Is that what you're telling me?
That type, exactly.
It's really garbage, it's not really trees?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure. So we're talking mostly buckthorn, and you're going to be planting a new, 100 new trees?
We're going to be doing 100 new trees. And of that variety, we're going to have maples, we're going to have oaks, we're going to have lotuses, we're going to have fantastic trees. And so we are really taking, quite frankly, the garbage. And we're replacing with some very nice trees. Very mature trees that will last a long time.
Continue.
So basically, a question for staff. I mean, if they're buckthorn and they're really garbage, is that really called for replacement per our code? I'm just kind of, I just want to give clarification on that.
Yes, thank you. So in regards to our code, I know we've tweaked it in the past. I know we have a, we've had some major concerns in the past in terms of trees, we are a tree city. We often fight that battle with the tree ordinance in terms of development. Obviously, you have to remove a considerable number of trees. Typically, from a staff standpoint, I guess my answer would be that we're overly restrictive, and we're overly restrictive for a reason because we don't want people going out clearcutting trees. And I know we've had incidents of that in the past, which is exactly why the ordinance was established. But really, what we do run into with developments, and obviously this is a good example, is that we have a considerable number of trees that we're dealing with. And some of these trees aren't really effectively quality trees. So it is called out in the ordinance to answer your question. Is that something that we can look at in the future? Absolutely, when we're reviewing the code. So I think we've, the pendulum has been at one extreme before. We've had some clearcutting. So the pendulum's gone to the other extreme. Where's the happy medium? It varies from site to site.
Go ahead, Mayor.
And so I'm, I'm just sitting here. When I saw it at first, I'm like 163 trees. I want to take them all down, and they don't want to do anything. But so I would take it, we've verified, basically buckthorn, we've been trying to get those cleaned up in other areas.
Correct.
Okay, I just, I want to understand the deviation, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Could you go to the microphone, please?
It's not that we're not doing anything with those 163. We are replacing, we're providing 55 replacement trees. So, so we've got, and then the additional trees add up to the 100 trees that we're replacing. We're not ignoring it, we're just, just physically impossible to replace.
So from what I'm understanding, there's a lot of trees there that are buckthorn or dead trees. So I mean, those, some of those are not going to be replaced from what I'm understanding, correct? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Woods?
Thank you. Since we're on the trees, because we go back and forth, there's 193 today. Call them whatever you want, I don't really care. It's 193 trees. And at the end, when you're done, I'm going to have, how many trees?
Slight correction, there's 194. And you're, at the end of the day, with our new development, you're going to have 100. 100 high-quality trees.
Okay, so a loss of 94 trees, albeit them bad-quality trees.
Mayor?
Sorry, I mentioned this when you guys came for the concept plan. Stormwater is a big concern for us. Right, I'm sure you guys know that we've got a $20 million project on the other side of town. And, you know, our ordinance is at 10,000 feet, and the county's at 25,000, you guys are at 19,000. And the way I understand is we're supposed to have, I don't know, two and a quarter acre-feet underground or something per the code. You guys are only proposing almost just over 3/4 acre-feet, if I understood that correctly. Those type of things make me nervous because, you know, we're up here spending $20 million because our forefathers cut corners. And you're kind of, I feel like you're asking us to cut corners on the stormwater. I'm a little nervous.
As Jim comes up with the actual final numbers, again, per today, we do nothing. Let's say this development, right today, if it rains like crazy tonight, the water is just running off and sheet draining. We are, again, reducing that flow by 83%. And we're providing enough detention to fill a six-lane Olympic-sized swimming pool. I know Jim can quote the acre-feet, and I'm, I didn't introduce myself. I apologize. Christian Kulishewski from WT Group. I am a partner of WT Group and also principal in charge. And I can't really picture when someone said acre-feet. But when you think of it, six-lane, you know, Mark Spitz won his gold medals, and a six-lane, full-blown Olympic pool. All that is being stored with our system. But Jim, you could give the...
So yes, we're providing a total of about 1.27 acre-feet of storage between our detention volume and our infiltration volume, or just under an acre-foot of true detention storage on the site.
Alderman Woods?
Just for clarification, because there's two things, right? The pavers are adding a certain thing, and then there's underground storage. So I think your last statement was the physical underground storage is under one acre-foot. Was that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And the rest of that calculation is the permeable pavers?
Correct.
Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, so the start date of this project is coming up in the spring of 2021, correct?
We would like to, like I've stated in my opening remarks, we've reached out to Mr. Bond to try to short-circuit that and begin immediately. We want to go. We want to go yesterday. So unfortunately, we don't have title to the property yet. So we have to work through agreements to get going.
So once that happens, the bank's going to go down immediately?
Bank's going to go down, yeah. We would, we would do an access agreement. We talked to Mr. Bond about doing an access agreement where we would fence off and start the process of demolition, which would accelerate, you know, any normal development cycle. And then we can continue to work on finalizing, you know, different things about the development and permits and such.
And as far as the stormwater, I mean, we're looking at the surrounding neighbors, that they're not going to get any excess water because of the underground drainage that you put in is going to be more than enough, of course?
We plan to be very simple about it. We plan to be neighbors of not only the Park District, the White Cottage, the police, but the city for a very long time. And we don't want to create any harm to any of those. And I think WT has done an excellent job of creating a system that works for the site and dramatically reduces current outflows. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, just to, again, not to beat a dead horse, but stormwater's been a huge thing in Wooddale forever. And to speak to the 20-plus million-dollar project that we have going, I think we're adding somewhere around 16 acre-feet just to stabilize that area. So when, and backing up a little bit, I'm sure there were engineers involved in that. And I'm not picking on any engineers, but, right? Things change, the world's very dynamic, the earth is dynamic, the water volumes are dynamic, all those things change. They're not static, right? So I'm a little nervous when we're on the outside edge of doing things is closer and closer to the full thing. So I would make a motion to approve this PUD with three amendments. And those amendments would be, one, to change the stormwater to meet the city's stormwater code at 100%. Number two, to change the brick-on-the-elevation from the 41 and fractional percent to 65%. And as far as the trees, the best I can tell, we're short 94 trees to monetize those trees and use those 94 trees to offset whatever monetary participation the city has in this project. And that would be my motion. And also, would like to see this project move much faster than it's been moving. That is my motion.
Could you explain, I didn't quite get what you were asking about the trees?
So the trees, I believe in part, they can't be placed on the site, right? The 194 trees is fairly impossible. And that comes up often, it's come up on single-family homes being built. So our code has a provision to offset that monetarily, right? And then the city would be able to plant those trees. the city would be able to plant those trees wherever it deemed necessary throughout the tree city of Wooddale. So I, I think in our code that, that gives a monetary value of whatever that is. I don't, I can't quote it. Maybe, could tell me, it's $200 a tree, $250 a tree, or whatever.
Yeah, it's about $500, $650.
Is it $650? So 94 times 650 would be the, the number. And, and we would just use that to offset our participation in the project. So whatever the money was that, in our agreement to participate, we would use that number to offset that or reduce that amount. Does that be?
Yeah, that clarifies.
Which is $61,000?
Do we have any other questions? There being none, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you guys for the great presentation.
Thank you.
And we look forward to working with you guys. Items to be considered for future meetings. I have one to add. We've been having a problem in our ward with people parking on, in the actual people's patios in the yard. So I want to get that addressed. Right now, we're allowing that.
Like in the back of the house? It's not an actual driveway?
Just briefly on that, actually, the city manager and myself, the plan was to include that in the UDO update, which I know now we're back to having meetings in person. We're going to be having a steering committee soon with the draft of the ordinance. So that was already the plan. So at some point later this year, when that draft comes back, it would exclude parking in the rear on patios.
Okay. Because I know we have an issue with a few homes in our ward that we have a lot of complaints about.
Correct.
So that would take care of those issues?
That would take care of exactly that issue.
Okay. There's no other reason? Alderman Sizmarski?
Yeah, there, we do have an ordinance that says you can't park on anything other than, other than asphalt or concrete. Well, unless you have gravel. Unless you grandfathered in, you're not supposed to be on any part of the grass or patio or anything else.
Go ahead.
The, yeah, the, the code, I believe it's a dust-free material, which essentially means park on a driveway. The, the issue with the patio is it's obviously dust-free. It's a unique situation that a few people have taken advantage of. I think with the code update, we will, we'll modify that.
Yeah. It was basically where the patio, the driveway goes back and it hits the patio and people are just actually parking on the patio.
Using it as a wing.
Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, I also like to bring some up for future meetings in reference to swimming pools ordinance coverage. Where, the last time we revised, it was back, I believe in 2016. And my impression was that the pools would actually take a calculation of the water, you know, going into the pool. But that wasn't the case. So I'd like to bring that back, see if we can look at that.
Mr. Cage?
Yep, absolutely. I know we, we had quite a lively discussion about lot coverage. And I know we changed some numbers. We put some provisions in. Alderman Catalano brings up a great point. We've had some, even though we've increased the percentage number from 35 to 40 percent, we have an increase in that with some BMPs that some people have taken advantage of. But there are still some lots where unfortunately, people buy the property, they're already exceed the lot coverage. And I think this is one of those situations. People are trying to improve their property. And obviously, they can't because the person before them has taken all the lot coverage. So we can add that on a future agenda. I know it'll be another lively discussion. I think what we did in 2016 was a good move from what I've seen since then in terms of permitting. And I do like the BMPs, which have worked very well. But there are some unique situations that, you know, we just run into that people are struggling with lot coverage. So I think we can have that discussion at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. With no other items be considered, I make a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
I'd like to bring the Public Works Committee meeting, call to orders. Minute taker, take note, same council members present. Need approval of the minutes of June 11, 2020, Public Works Committee meeting. Any, any corrections? If they are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and the corrective asphalt material for the pavement prevented maintenance in the amount not to exceed $34,320. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? No questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next is approval of the change order number one for the agreement with Brothers Asphalt Paving Company for the fiscal year-end in 2021 for Capital Road Program in the amount not to exceed $26,610.50. That is my motion.
Second.
Go ahead. Mayor Nunezio?
Is this the one, so this is where Apollo's in? And are we adding an additional, I don't know how many feet of storm sewer into that cul-de-sac? Is that correct?
Go ahead, Alan.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. That is correct. This is for the extension of the eight-inch storm sewer and the addition of two inlets on Apollo Court to the cul-de-sac.
So that takes care of that problem?
Correct.
Because the other question that I have is, they're going to do storm work over there, correct? And, go ahead.
Is that on Apollo Court you're asking, Chairman? Yeah. So as we mentioned, the, the storm sewer on Apollo Court currently ends about halfway down the block. So we're going to extend from the catch basin that's in the street there northward down to the cul-de-sac and install two, two additional inlets to collect surface water and also provide access points for residents to connect their sump pump discharges to.
So as far as the residents connecting, have they been contacted or are they coming forward to, go ahead?
I have spoken to a number on the block that we know have issues with sump pump discharges. And we're going to be actually providing yard drains as we did similar over on Dalewood Avenue.
So how does that work? Do they have to pay for a certain amount to hook up? Or how does that work?
We would provide the, the yard drain out to the edge of the parkway. And they would be responsible for making the connection from their house to the actual yard drain.
Go ahead, Alderman Sizmarski.
Does this have any, does this have anything to do with the, with the new stormwater just project we're doing now? Does it add on to that amount?
It actually is separate from that. This was just something that we had identified earlier as a need. And we thought now with the road being torn up, it was a good opportunity to do this.
Second question, how many change orders have we had already since the start of this program?
Uh, this is the first one.
That's the first one?
Mayor?
Just to clarify, so in that whole area, we've got a lot of, which I asked to bring to a committee at one point. And I'm sure now that we're getting back to normal, we will. So there's a lot of areas on that side of town where, when they built those homes 55, 60 years ago,
Right.
they stopped halfway down the block and it kind of slopes. So from all the way to the corner, all the way to our road, if anybody wanted to connect, there's nothing to connect. There's a lot of problems back there. As Alderman Catalano, I'm sure has heard because problems happening around him. The pipe in the backyard is actually resident-owned and they're collapsing. Those were forged pipes. And when we started the project, Mr. Fundage was talking about some of those pipes being resized in that area. So being that they cheated 50 years ago or 60 years ago, let's not make the same mistake. And let's see if we can find some of those and correct them. That's basically what this is. There's, so he basically said, I don't know how long this run is on Apollo Court, but back there, nobody can connect to anything. And it's, there's no drain at all over there.
Right. This is a decision we make under our road program with direction from the council to identify possible repairs to utilities before we repair the road.
Okay. And also, it's causing a lot of backyard flooding, major backyard flooding around all those areas. Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I'll just chime in. I mean, this is a no-brainer. Makes sense. We're putting in this project to capture and putting in the, and then half the people can't avail themselves to tap into it because they'd have to run a pipe 100 feet down the street away from their house. Cost prohibitive. And, and this goes directly to our prior subject matter of things in the past not being done correctly, which is why we were a little stricter with adhering to our code. Thank you.
Mayor?
Just a follow-up. So what happens is in that area, a lot of people are, have their sump pumps going out front. In the summertime, there's water after rains, it's smelling up the front because with this 95 degrees, if it rains, the pump starts pumping it out there. In the wintertime, that's why you have a lot of sidewalks over there, they're all icy and chunks of ice everywhere. This will allow people to start correcting those problems. It's not, they're not going to all tap in at once. But as people start to do things, it makes sense to fix the problems.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Is there an estimate to cost, Alan, for the resident to tap in?
You know what? I don't have an estimate, but I could talk to the contractor. They might be willing to make the connection for the resident and just build the resident directly at that time. We could try to get an idea of what that might be.
Any other questions? If they are none, roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Did we make a motion? No, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Okay, next is approval of an amendment to an agreement with Baxter and Woodman for the professional services for the fiscal year-end in '21 through '22 for the Capital Road Program in the amount not to exceed $25,100. That is my motion.
Second.
Alderman Woods?
What is the amendment to it?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, this is partially to cover the work as we just discussed on Apollo Court. And then the larger chunk of it is to provide Phase One and Phase Two engineering for Foster Avenue. Originally, when we submitted the SDP application, it was only going to be for Central Avenue. But it was decided at that time to do one for Foster as well and to see where it fell. And as it turns out, it is placed at the top of the contingency plan for the SDP funding, which means if any project in any town gets delayed or falls out of the funding for any reason, we would be the first to be programmed. So it's beneficial to us to keep the ball rolling on that, to be prepared to take advantage of that opportunity when it comes up.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? If they are none, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Okay, and items to consider for future meetings? Alderman Sizmarski?
Yeah, Alan, this goes to the mayor and also the city manager. I've asked for years up here and still have not received an answer yet. And it's not trying to beat anybody down to the ground. I want to know why. I've talked to numerous people outside this town. Everyone else is bad. Their city creek's dredged by the, by the Army Corps of Engineers. And we sit here and we have, never get anything done by them. Why don't they come out here and dredge our river and dredge our system to stop flooding us? Because they are a major part of this problem. And I'm not an engineer, but I will put my two cents and say, yeah, it is probably part of the problem.
Isn't that the county? Isn't that the county that owns it or the state? Go ahead.
The county doesn't suffer, we do.
DuPage County Stormwater Management is responsible for the maintenance of the creek, but it's certainly something that we could look into, what needs to be done.
I understand that. But our residents live here. The county don't give two craps about who lives here. They just want their money for their town, for their part of the state. So we can find out why they don't come in and don't want to do anything?
I'd be glad to find more information on that, absolutely.
Right. It's not fair that they don't spend any money, go after it too.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, thank you. To piggyback on Alderman Sizmarski, and I brought this up a while back, too. And driving by today, I looked at it and went, I need to bring this up. So the outfall at the treatment plant, right? So when you look at that, the buildup, obviously you get the settlement that falls and that keeps getting built up there and, and forces everything to spread or, or raise prematurely. So if, if nothing else, at least by that treatment plant, that should be something I would think would be a regular maintenance thing, whether that happens every 10 years or 15 years to minimally dredge that part because we continue to add to it, right, from the fallout from the treatment plant.
Right. Yeah, it's something I can definitely look at with the Assistant Director, Mr. Grelly.
And again, it's not, I'm not trying to beat anybody's hand. Just, you know, we spend money after money and millions after millions. It'd be nice to see somebody else kick something in and try helping out. And it could be their problem, you know? It could be a simple fix.
Absolutely. I'm glad to look into it for you.
Any other question? If there are none, items to consider for future meetings, the clock tower and engineer standards coming up in August. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Excellent. I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee to order. Let the minute taker reflect that all the same members are present. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the
So move.
minutes from June 11, 2020. Any questions, corrections, changes? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next report and recommendation, exciting bill printing and mailing service contract. Mr. Wilson?
Brad King, you're on his vacation.
Yeah, on his vacation. This guy is dedicated.
Oh, wow.
And, well, how could you miss this topic? I mean, really?
How could you miss the first meeting back?
He'd be remiss.
How could you miss the first meeting back?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, definitely a historic night. And, you know, we couldn't miss it. And, you know...
We haven't talked about this in a long time.
I'll say when your vacation is in, was scheduled to be in a hot zone, that I had to self-quarantine for two weeks after I got back. Doing the math, it didn't really seem to pan out. So, so here I am.
Nice.
Yeah. So utility bill print, as part of the ERP process, you may recall during strategic planning, I think we put forth probably six or seven things that we were going to likely bid out over the next couple of years as part of the ERP process to make sure that the vendors align with capabilities of the ERP system, as well as to, you know, kick the tires on pricing, things of that nature. So as you can see in the packet, the pricing came back very favorably. You know, the incumbent's price came down a fair amount. But then there was, the other, the other provider came in very aggressive with their pricing. It's a little sad for me. I've worked with the incumbent for over 16 years. But unfortunately, the pricing is what it is. And we're looking to make a change. Also, the new vendor is going to be able to integrate a little bit smoother with the ERP than the incumbent would be. So it looks like it's going to be a beneficial change for, for everybody all around. So.
Nice. Any questions? Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, what kind of savings will we be seeing with this new contract?
Not enough to give you a raise.
There we go. Yeah, so currently, we're spending, I'm just going to round a little bit, about $21,000 a year for bill printing and mailing, or just the bill printing. The, the mailing's washed. It's the same price. So about $21,000 for the printing and stuffing of the bills. The new company, Apples to Apples, is going to be just below $8,300 per year. And we can probably get it closer to $8,000 with some, you know, companion billings. Like if you own multiple properties, it can be put in one envelope. We can finally suppress the envelope for people that are on auto pay. We get that call a lot. If I'm on auto pay, why do I still get an envelope? So we're going to be able to suppress those costs as well. So probably closer to about $8,000. So about $12,000 at least in annual savings.
Great job.
And feel free to stop sending me the bill altogether. That'll help you save some money. I'm, you know, I'm willing to pitch in always, as you know.
And by the way, you're not the only one on vacation. I'm here too. So I'm on vacation. You don't have to feel that bad.
Does anybody, any other questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
So move.
All in favor? Uh, no, roll call, roll call. I forgot. Got carried away.
Did you put a monetary value on there?
No, as, as presented, the lowest bidder.
Which, what can we put the number, can we get? Which, can we put the number, can we get the name number on there? All right. Well, just for the roll call purposes.
Brad said he's working on getting it reduced, so...
Okay.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next items to be considered at future meetings, there are none, does anybody have any? Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Aye.
Thank you all for... Please.
Well, that's right, it's funny that you brought that up, they may at least have to dredge out this.